Just grabbed my agenda. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance? If you'd all rise. Play ball.
Say nice.
All right.
And next on the agenda, the meeting minutes from the meeting of April 15th, oh, my God. Do we have motion?
I will.
Go ahead.
Steve, I was not in the meeting, so I'm not going to vote on these minutes.
I will accept them.
Second.
All in favor? I all opposed. Motion carries. Next is the Edward McGinley subdivision.
Good evening. My name is Steve Wasilison.
Did you just get with a mic?
My name is Steve Wasilison. I'm from GD Hoop and its son. I'm here with Edward McGinley and Katie McGinley, who are the owners of the property. We're looking to subdivide six parcels of ground, which he has owned since 1966. The existing parcel contains six lots, five of them which are vacant, and one which contains a dwelling and a swimming pool. Three of the lots are currently noncompliant with the current zoning, that they're less than an acre, and Lot 36 is noncompliant in that it contains a swimming pool, an accessory structure on a lot with nothing else to it. So we have four noncompliant lots. What we're proposing to do is eliminate property lines and create three lots. One larger lot that'll contain the dwelling and the swimming pool, and two building lots, which will be larger and comply with current zoning requirements. This is being done for state purposes. There are no plans currently for selling the lots. It's just done for state purposes at this point in time. We've staked out the Easterly property lines. There's two existing lots. They're being combined into one larger lot. And the four lots that are on the Westerly side, we're putting a line down between them to put all the improvements on Lot Number Two, and then vacant building lot on Lot Number One. The question came up about how we set that lot line between Lot Number One and Lot Number Two. Here is the existing conditions plan.
Actually, that mic will swing around if it's more comfortable for you.
Thank you. So what we have here is existing conditions plan, and if you can see that lot line, the lot line between One and Two, we're coming up, and we're traveling, and we're hitting the fence that's surrounding the swimming pool, putting a slight angle point, and running along a division line between some trees that are located on Lot Number Two. What we have here are some pictures. The question came up, why did we put this angle point there? On the lower lot, Lot Number One, if you see this steep slope, that's what we call Bethel rocks. It's large rocks. And at the top of those rocks, there's some low-lying shrubs. And the shrubs were over the rocks, and they're also above the top of the rocks. And so what we're trying to do is keep the shrubs that are associated with that rock wall with the owner of Lot One. And there's a nice tree row on top, which we'll put with Lot Two, existing house. My finger is on the property corner.
If you can hold this a second. Can we pan out a little bit, please? Or slide that over to the right?
I'm sorry.
Either or. Yeah, thanks.
We asked them to zoom in on the pictures. Thank you.
Okay. This flag here, at this fence post, is the flag in the corner that's closest to Lot Number One. And then we take another picture, and you can see the same fence corner, and you can see where we're putting our angle point. And then this is the line on top. We're running across that line, and we're separating the tree row from the row of shrubs that are associated with that wall. Those shrubs are clearly associated with the wall, and the tree row is clearly associated with Lot Number Two. So we only put that angle point in there, so there's no questions. Our survey crew was out there, and we originally tried to just shove it straight down through that fence line and continue it all the way through, but they're coming up in the middle of that low shrubs. And the question came up, well, who's taking care of the shrubs? You know, what if the lower group lot doesn't want them, and the top lot cuts them? So we thought it best to keep those two separate to where they belong, because we're just looking at the top end of those shrubs where the bottom end of those low are hanging over the wall. And that's where that angle point came in. We just thought it made a good place to put the property line. That being said, we submitted plans, and we have a review letter. And that was one of the comments in the review letter. I'll go briefly through the letter. First comment, the first comment was talking about the side lot line, and my explanation is to where we came up with that side lot line and why it's in that shape. Under comment, under zoning comment number one, it's a question about lot width for Lot One and Two are shown incorrectly in the zoning table. We could correct that if there's just a difference of making sure the table agrees with the planned view. Number two is the issue that we may have. It talks about lots being defined as interior lots, and if Lot Two is an interior lot, then the front setback has to be increased, and if it's increased, the swimming pool would be within the front yard, and we'd have to be in front of the zoning hearing board. What we're trying to do here is trying to avoid going to the zoning hearing board. Remember, in the beginning, we had three lots that were noncompliant in terms of area, and one lot that was noncompliant with a swimming pool on it and with accessory structures. So what we've proposed to do is make a minor revision to that lot line between Two and One, where we just swing the One line down a little bit to the south and give a 120-foot lot width at the 60-foot building line. And it's my understanding that the township engineer and the solicitor have agreed that this would not, this would take this out of being defined as an interior lot, and we wouldn't have to go in front of the zoning hearing board. But I don't want to speak for them.
No, that's accurate.
Okay. And that's comment number three, where it talks about going in front of the zoning hearing board. Comment four is just asking us for a breakdown of a previous coverage chart. We certainly had no problem with doing that. In the SLDO, comment number one, we're probably going to ask for a partial waiver. We have the structures on the plans. We can add the driveways. We can add the uses. I guess we're going to ask a waiver for adding all utilities. Again, we have no intentions of building all these lots. I don't know when they're going to be built on. Hopefully not too soon. Mr. McGinley has no plans to sell these lots. And two, planning modules. We actually had approached DEP. We thought it made sense that since we had six lots and we're reducing it down to three lots, that logic would say that we wouldn't need a planning module, but DEP said, no, you don't. So took two shots at it, and we struck out. So we were in the process of submitting planning modules and preparing the modules. We actually just received a county signature from the county today, from your office today, so it's in the process. And those are the comments. Any questions?
They asked for a title report, I guess, is general comment?
We did submit a title report.
Yeah, that's been received. We got that.
It was Thursday or Friday of last week. It was late.
I have a question, if I could. Mr. Chairman? In the back of Property Three, well, actually, I guess it would be maybe north, there is a, it looks like a 20-foot macadam drive there. Who does that belong to, and where is it going? The top of the drawing?
That's the driveway going to the Chubb, James L. Chubb and Phyllis Ray D. Phillips. There's just a little piece of encroachment there.
Where's that?
It's the back of the new lot, Number Three, to the east. It services what's an interior lot, and that driveway comes along out the front and goes out to Atterbury Road.
All right. So you really don't have full access at that point to Atterbury Road?
We do, no. We have, there is at the end of, at the end of Atterbury Road, there is a 20-foot wide access easement that allows our lot and the lot for Phyllis to use that, have access to Atterbury.
Okay. So you're not, at this point in time, or when it's developed, thinking of
No. We have no
Connecting Atterbury?
We have no, oh, no.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. Did you consider moving the fence for that pool to just straighten out the line or, and keeping it back?
No, we were just trying to keep things as they were today. The plantings and everything were, have been put there over the years. You can see how pretty the trees were, and we just, they just felt that that was a nice place to keep things rather than move it.
Does staff have an issue with it, other than what it created with regard to the, they fixed the issue with the 60-foot and the 120, the 120 feet? Other than that, are you particularly concerned about the jagged line?
From an engineering standpoint, no, I'm not. And I believe that follows the intent of the ordinance where it allows for property lines in that manner when it's based on natural terrain or it's protecting resources. I know, I don't want to speak for the solicitor's office, but Peter had some concern, but again, this may supersede that concern.
Yeah. I mean, one of Peter's concerns was that this could adversely, or this could create problems with future owners between Lot One and Lot Two. But it was my understanding from Peter that if there's a good reason for this, it would be fine the way it is.
Okay. So then the only other question I have is, the calculations on the table for Lot One, do they include that macadam area or not, as impervious? Did you include that in there?
Yes.
Okay. So Roger, when you look at Lot One, and I, recognizing they have no plans to develop it at this time, given the amount of steep slopes and the calculations that would be done down the road for, you know, construction and building permits and all sorts of things, are they, is the potential here that we're creating a lot that's not going to be buildable? And that may not be our concern, but
No, I don't have that concern, and they're making it actually a lot better than what it was.
Yeah, it's
They have the right now to come in with the six separate lots and build on those lots, and it was a lot worse off than what this plan would be.
Okay. So you, so the existing macadam, because it's already going through some steep slopes, that would essentially, down the road, be, probably be the access for that, for Lot One?
Yes.
Okay. The only other question I have for staff is that if this were a subdivision with land development concurrent, are there any street improvements that staff would ask for that kind of, we're not asking for now because there's no plan for land development at this time?
I don't believe so, because that Campwood Circle there is, you know, the existing street, I don't know that you would need to widen that or anything.
No, no, I'm thinking things like street lamps, fire hydrants, things like that. Well, I don't know that, I don't know that Campwood's, I have no idea if Campwood's is sidewalked or not, or if any portions of it are. But I'm just talking about the kind of seldom improvements that we would generally ask for with a land development that are we, I don't want to miss the opportunity to just say, hey, down the road, if you get, if a building permit is asked for on one of these lots, those land, those street improvements would need to be made.
Yeah, but this is not a land development. This is a lot line change. This is a subdivision, which is different. There's no improvements planned.
I understand that. And what I'm trying to say is, would there be land, would there be street improvements you would ask for if there were land development being done at this time? That's all.
Potentially, depending on what that land development would entail, what the improvements would be that they were, they were looking to put on there. If they were building three new houses, possibly, but this plan is not a land development plan.
Okay.
I guess the issue is that if you look at the plan that's existing right now, he could potentially sell those five lots to five different builders who could come in tomorrow and make five applications for building permits.
Any other staff questions? Any questions from the audience? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have a recommendation? Any other additional staff discussion first? Concerns?
Well, I would recommend that, I would move that we recommend that we approve the, we approve the application conditioned on the applicant satisfying the issues that are in Mr. Phillips' April 26, 2016 memo.
There was one request for grant of a waiver for the 500
A partial.
Yeah, foot. What's that? No, no. No, they solved the pool problem by adjusting the frontage. Now, this is the existing conditions.
The last person that came in and asked for that waiver, we didn't give it to them, if I remember correctly.
That is correct.
Wasn't one here last month or month before last?
That's accurate.
Asked for the same thing, and we said no.
Yes, on Garrett Avenue.
All right. I think we need to be consistent.
Well, there were, there were improvements that went along with that plan that you're referring to.
Yeah.
There's no improvements being proposed at this time.
So we don't, so we shouldn't even address the waiver, then?
No, you would still need to address the waiver, but there's, in my opinion, I believe the additional information that would be requested for the 500 feet is kind of irrelevant at this point, because they're not making any improvements to anything, so.
But to kind of get back to what Susan said before, would this come up again if they start making improvements?
Yes.
Well, the sanitary sewer and water run right through this project so that we wouldn't have to go outside of our limits of our property if and when it's developed. The sewer and the water are right there and within the limits of the site. I just don't want to waive our rights Understood. For that to happen later on when they come in and do that. That's the only thing I'm concerned myself with. And if, and if they don't waive those rights, then I'm okay with it.
Okay, then you want to, Charlie, I'm sorry, John, you want to add the granting of the waiver, or Susan?
Waive the rights to, Charlie, just repeat that last sentence, because I think you and I are thinking the same thing.
Yeah, I just don't want to, and he says they're not. I don't want to waive the rights that they need to put in those 500 feet utilities and whatever else that needs to go on most drawings, because, you know, that's, that's an issue that we haven't waived before, and I don't think we should waive it now. But he says it's not necessary, because they're not asking for any, any improvements on the lots. So I, and I'm okay with that, as long as, by giving him the waiver tonight, we also give him the waiver in the future when someone, after they sell a lot, make those improvements. Yes.
Yep. I think Roger was saying that he has to comply with that when they do land development.
When someone comes into the township and wants to build a house on an, on an empty lot, as part of the grading permit process for constructing that house, I require them to show all of the surrounding utilities and all of this other information that we're discussing here that has an impact on what the improvements will be. Like I said, at this point, there are no improvements planned for this.
Well, actually, so that kind of, Roger, that kind of gets to my question. So at that point, there is a point at which if you were to see the land, all the utilities, this and that, and the township were to make a determination at that time, hey, you know, we're about to have three new houses down the end of a cul-de-sac, there needs to be a fire hydrant, or there needs to be a couple of street lamps. Do you, does the township have the ability to require those as part of a, of a grading permit or a building permit process? Or will the township end up having to pay for those improvements at that time because it's individual building permits, not a land development?
I believe they do for the utility side of things. I don't know about the streetlights. I couldn't tell you about that.
So I think this is, this is the back door to avoiding, to avoiding, this is it. And there's some, a person in the public brought this forth a couple of years ago. When you do a subdivision, and I appreciate, Mr. McGinley has no plans to sell now, and it's a, you know, it's a genuine desire, but this is how we avoid getting the kind of street improvements that come with land development.
Well, the only, the only difference here, though, is that it's a consolidation, and they already can come in on individual
Well, fair comment. Yes, absolutely.
So we back to the motion?
The only question, again, on the utilities, is that if you saw the utilities that were there, would it ever impact where these lines are allowed to be drawn? Probably not, right?
No.
Regardless?
Right.
They would just have to have easements or whatever if one utility crossed into another property, right?
Yeah, the site contain, if, there are numerous easements already on the property. The sanitary sewer runs from Campwood Circle over at the Atterbury Road, and then there are easements that run off on either side that are already provided for the adjoining properties. So our lot, it's the same thing with water. The sewer and the water is just in the middle between all the lots, so we wouldn't have to bring anything to the site. It's already on the site.
Yeah, so if there are any other, like, electric or whatever, you would handle it in the same fashion?
Mr. McGinley has already, over the years, granted the easements for these things to be added to the property.
Well, based on the discussion, I don't see what needs to be changed in the motion.
Granting of the waiver. If we want to grant the waiver for the drawing of, within existing conditions, 500 feet.
So Roger, they do need to request this waiver?
Yeah, that's what I'm confused about.
Regardless of the fact that they're not developing anything?
Yes.
They still need the waiver? And in your opinion, it's really, it's fine for us to
I have no objection to granting the waiver.
I don't really see any difference either, because it would come later.
The only thing I'm worried about is, if we give him the waiver now, does it mean that he has the waiver later also? Will they say, oh, well, you gave it to us then, and that, that's how we're going by? That's all I'm worried about.
I think we've been told no, correct? So Skip? I was just going to say we could plug it into the, our motion, that it's specific to just the subdivision process.
But Roger, if they were to come in with a single land development plan for one of these lots, would they need that 500 feet showing?
A single lot wouldn't be a land development plan.
Right. So they can do that today for six lots.
What the
So we're not giving anything that we don't already have away.
Just so everyone understands what this requirement is. It's, it's a requirement for anything within 500 feet of the property to be surveyed and put on the plan, such as utilities, contour lines, all that. So where, on the plan, where they show the houses that are down the street on Campwood's, they would have to actually go in and survey those lots in order to get all of the terrain information, the contour lines and all of that, to be placed on the plan. And it's outside of any area where they would be, actually be doing any work, and would have no effect as to what they could do on their properties, just so everybody's clear what that requirement is.
So I think the struggle, and Charlie and I think, I think we view this the same way, which is, the hesitancy is to grant it in some cases and not in others is inconsistent. And, but I think, and it's not the conversation to have now, because it's not even on the agenda, but I know for myself, I wonder, what does the requirement, what is the purpose of the requirement if we're asking for it, and yet we continue to give the waiver for it? Then what information are you, is the township not getting by granting the waiver? And when is that important, and when is it not important? And perhaps the ordinance itself needs to be changed so that we appropriately apply it and don't inappropriately apply it? Does that make sense to everybody else?
That's, that's the problem zoning runs against all the time. You know, that, you know, why is it, why is it one place and not the other?
You know, but we do this all the time. I mean, we'll grant a waiver for sidewalks, because it's not in the character of the development.
But I don't think we have a good understanding of what this particular, I know I don't have a good understanding of what, what information this particular requirement brings that it's, there are times when the staff says, yeah, it's not a big deal. We don't need it.
You know, Roger, just take another shot at it then, for you, if you can.
With what?
Like, what, what, what is the, what is the goal? You said what the ordinance requires the applicant to do. What is the goal of collecting all this information?
On, in my opinion, on larger land development plans or subdivision plans, it requires the developer to show the surrounding properties within 500 feet so that we can identify any impacts that that would have for some, any of the off-site properties. And we can take into account drainage and, and all of that, that type of stuff. See how it affects the surrounding. And, and for much larger projects than this. That's why sometimes I don't support doing this, and sometimes I do. And it's not being inconsistent. It's, it's actually evaluating on a case-by-case basis what information would be germane to that review and then what wouldn't be, so.
So in essence, the ordinance, the ordinance lets us, it's set up to let us look at everything, and then we can make a case-by-case determination as, well, it's not really, it's too small to have that much of an impact, so we're not, you know, we don't really need the ordinance in this case, but here we have the protection where we do need it.
Yeah, that would, that would be a pretty good summary, I guess.
So if, by granting the waiver, we're just saving the applicant from the, incurring the expense of additional surveys and examinations of the area and supplying it to the township, and the township isn't necessarily, you're not necessarily, you don't need that for what you have to do.
In my opinion, in this case, that would not add anything to the information required to do this review.
And we're not giving
In other projects, in other projects, it absolutely does. In this one, I don't believe it does.
But didn't we add it to that little row house on, was it Garrett?
But see, and I would tell you, in that particular case, I think it was of value to understand the scale of the development relative to the rest of the neighborhood. And we were missing it by not having it in that one, and because those houses are each double the size of what's existing. So, you know, that, that's where the scale came in. But Roger, I think that what you're saying now is actually helpful to us. So then, what that would suggest is that we should look to staff to recommend or approval of denial of this particular waiver based on the information that your, that staff is looking for, for an application, in which case, you don't need it this time. So let's, you know, Steve, was it Steve or John who made the, do you mind including the waiver?
Sure. I'm going to draw the first motion here. I withdraw the first motion and move that we grant the waiver and also recommend approval of the application upon the applicant satisfactorily addressing the comments in Mr. Phillips' April 26, 2016 memo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is the PLO Ordinance Amendment. Haven't seen that in a while.
Good evening, everyone. And everyone is here, isn't, aren't they?
Oh, can you hold a second, Steve?
Sure.
Yeah, Roger? Skip's got a question.
On the agenda, there's a thing that could be a two-minute thing. The planning module for 229, 227 Plant Avenue, is that still on the agenda?
It is, and it should be an under a two-minute thing, yes.
That's the thing where we approve it because we have to, but there's nothing to approve?
We can keep mine to two minutes.
No, we can't.
Yes, that's the, that's the planning module for the Plant Avenue plan that was in front of you a while ago. They're ready to finalize their planning module and submit to DEP. So there's, there's one section in the planning module that this board has to approve and sign. It gets put into the book with all of the other different approvals that had been granted, and then it goes in front of the Board of Commissioners for their approval of a resolution before it gets sent to DEP. So that's what's in front of you here tonight.
And there was no, there's nothing in our paper packet, but
There, there should have been a review letter.
It's right behind Mr. McGinley's It's right behind Mr. McGinley's application.
It's, it's just a copy of the form that, that once this board makes a motion and it...
I read the Act 247 and figured it was the Plant Avenue, but I'm reading it closely. It's Mr. McGinley's.
So do we have to read it?
There, it's, again, it's a, it's an administrative exercise here.
We have to vote on it, right?
Yes.
And who's, and...
Can you make a recommendation to us as to what we should do on this agenda item, since we don't have it in front of us?
You would need a motion to, to grant the approval of signing component 4A, which is the Municipal Planning Agency Review, which is this board for the planning module for the 229 and 227 Plant Avenue.
Well, if you have, unless it's voluminous, if you have a copy, could we just pass it around so we get some general idea of what we're doing?
And it's all, it's all been accepted.
Yeah, we've done this before.
Basically, as long as they have capacity and they've accepted their application, we should have no reason not to recommend approval.
That's correct.
I move we recommend approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Steve, next, PLO.
Steve, when that, when that gets to you, sign your name next to where the yellow tag is. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone, and I want to first start off by apologizing. I usually have a cover memo to go with the materials. I didn't get it to Patty to get into the packet, so you don't have it. What I do in that memo is summarize where we were, what we talked about last month. Last month, we talked about two things, the traffic neutrality concept and how it would work, and then we had some good discussion about gross floor area percentages for different uses on sites 10 acres or greater in size. The Planning Commission directed that we do some reworking of those percentages so that we could get some meaningful square footages of all three of the minimum uses that are going to be required for sites 10 acres or more in size. And then otherwise, the Planning Commission was pretty comfortable with the overall ordinance in its, in its content, at least based on last month's meeting. So let me point you in the direction of those revisions on the gross floor area percentages. We can go, I can run through those. If you have any questions about that, we can talk about them. And then if you have any other questions or thoughts on any part of the ordinance, we can go from there. In the, in the ordinance with the track changes turned on, if you go to page nine, and it would be the, the section that takes up most of the page that starts for sites 10 acres or larger. Everyone have that in front of them? I know sometimes the way things print out, they may not match up absolutely. What we, what we've, there were two things that we talked about. One was just percentages of individual uses. The other was to make sure that those three minimum uses that are required for these sites have some meaningful sizes. We didn't want a third use to be 1,000 square feet and qualify. We wanted to try and retain the mixed-use concept in a meaningful way because along with just the mixture of uses and the appeal that that has for the township, mixed uses oftentimes result in some reduced traffic impacts, at least during peak hours, because different uses have different peaks. They don't necessarily match up to the peak traffic on the street that they empty onto. And so we can get a couple of benefits by having these mixed uses and having them be meaningful sizes. So what we read, what we ended up inserting there is, out of the three minimum uses, let me start from the beginning, for sites 10 acres or larger, there shall be a minimum of three uses established as part of a mixed-use development. Out of the three minimum uses, one use may be designated for up to 65% of the permitted gross floor area, and two uses may be designated for up to 85% of the permitted gross floor area. The third and any additional uses shall be designated to utilize the remaining permitted gross floor area. That remaining permitted gross floor area would be the 15, the minimum of 15%. 15 and 85 adding up to 100%. So then we went and then took a look at the individual uses themselves, trying to clarify that what each individual use in a mixed-use development could have in the way of a percent of the gross floor area total. General office use, 65%. Then a maximum of 65% of the permitted gross floor area may be designated for medical office use, retaining maximum of 35% for hotel use, retaining a maximum of 35% for age-restricted, multiple-family development use, a maximum of 10% for retail uses, maximum of 10% for personal service uses, maximum of 10% for restaurant uses, a maximum of 10% of the permitted gross floor area for a bank or similar financial institution use, and then a maximum of 30% of the permitted gross floor area may be designated for any one, two, or all three uses among indoor health, fitness center use, skilled nursing and/or assisted living use, and outpatient Peter had a chance to review this, found it to be in line with what we discussed last month and achieving what appeared to be the Planning Commission's desire for these floor area percentages.
Why is the hotel only, oh, 35?
35? Well, I think because of the typical size of hotels, they'll work out to around that percentage of the larger sites and the amount of square footage you would put on one of the larger sites.
So I guess I'm a little confused. So it's 35% of the total build-out of the site, floor area-wise?
Right.
So that means you're still left with 65% something else if you choose to put a hotel?
Two, yeah, that's right. Two other uses would, would make up the other 65%. If you go to the maximum of 35%.
So you couldn't have hotel as your primary use if you're exceeding 10 acres?
You could, but in terms of the value that you would be getting out of your property, you'd be talking about a hotel that's, give or take, 100,000 square feet. And then you'd still have room for perhaps another 300, 350,000 square feet on a, on a site like the Penn Medicine Site is today, the new Penn Medicine Site. So you could have the hotel as the biggest use, but in that case, then you'd have smaller other uses, and you wouldn't necessarily be getting the best value. But that's, again, that's really depends on what the applicant wants to achieve on their property.
So I guess, I don't understand why they have that smaller percent for hotel. Is it, is it because they're a larger generator of traffic, or?
Well, there's a, there's a little bit of the, of the traffic in there, but there's also the typical size of hotels that are built in this setting. The hotel...
So it's just to manage the maximum size of a hotel?
It's, it's to try and, it's not so much manage it as it is to match, match up with it. And also...
So that it's not unusual outside of the typical hotel sizing?
Well, yeah, and, and not to have two or three hotels on one site.
I see. That makes sense now.
To continue that...
Okay, that makes, that makes more sense.
Yeah, to continue the office as kind of the primary, and then have a hotel as a complimentary use to an office use.
So how large, how many square feet is a hotel typically? You know, a...
I mean, roughly speaking, I'm saying 100,000 square feet.
Okay.
It could be a little bit smaller, could be a little bit larger.
All righty. So then, in the, just understanding the difference between page five and page nine, in terms of the, making sure that the definitions match up to the regulations or the percentages. On page five, under, under A uses, where we have retail stores with individual gross floor area not to exceed 10,000 square feet, but 10% of, of a property can be that kind of use. That would, you know, so at Biomed, that would suggest that they could have approximate, that they could have four, four, four retail shops of 10,000, 10,000 square feet each, because they basically have 47.5 in retail use and in the 10%. Is that?
Based, based on, based on the gross floor area percentages, that's correct. But they also have to keep in mind traffic neutrality.
That I understa, that part I understand. But what I'm saying is that there's nothing in the uses that restricts it to, to one retail store.
Correct.
It's just no one retail store can be more than 10,000.
More than 10,000.
Thank you.
And the Planning Commission also decided to make sure that those were within big buildings.
And Steve, the way this is written, can we wind up with 100% of the lot devoted to office, medical office, and surgical center, and nothing else?
Based on the, on the percentages?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Close, close to it.
Right, I mean...
Yeah, all of it, yes.
All of it, okay, so...
That could be the three.
Okay, so...
No, because two uses can only go up to 85%.
I said, yeah, but there's, the third use is surgical center.
Yeah, but, so the way I'm reading the beginning of that, it says 65% can be for one, and two uses can be up to 85%.
Yeah, office and medical office are two uses. The third use is a surgical center.
I don't see surgical centers...
Go all the way down to the bottom. Alpation, I'm sorry, outpatient, outpatient surgical center.
Okay, thank you.
And that's a good comment, Steve, because, I mean, from the, at the beginning, surgical center was listed as a separate use. But given the medical office definition, it includes surgery as, as one of the activities that would take place. So we're almost, it's almost like we're providing for surgical, surgical centers twice.
Right.
It would, it, my, my initial reaction is that surgical center should no longer be a freestanding use.
Right. That would be my recommendation. The other thing is, take me through this one more time. We're doing all this. What is the benefit to us if we're just getting traffic neutrality? Why should we go through all these, all this effort to have the same traffic? Because that's what we're concerned about. So is it, we're just getting more development? What's, what's the value proposition for us to go through all this?
Well, I think...
Can I ask another question to, to clarify before you fill that in?
Okay.
The traffic neutrality means the peak traffic, the one peak during the day?
There's two. Two.
Are both peaks?
AM and PM.
Okay, so we're, AM and PM peak will not increase? That's, that's what we're really getting?
Based on our, compared to the baseline use that we've defined in the ordinance.
It's not the, the worst of the two won't increase?
No.
It's both, okay. All right, now go ahead and...
Individually, not combined.
I just wanted to make sure of that. Now go ahead and answer, Steve. Thanks.
I mean, the other aspects involve mixed use and, and also trying to promote a little more flexibility, I guess, in design, so that we've, you know, we've, we've expanded the foot, the potential footprint for the, for PLO properties by narrowing the setbacks. But we also have a lot of green space requirement and a, a greater green space requirement in terms of percent of site area than the current PLO zoning district does. There's a height increase in exchange for this additional green space. So, you know, on the, on the total site. So, so there's, those are trade-offs, but to promote more variability and flexibility in design, to go along with the mixture of uses that I think has, you know, has, has been in all the discussions for the many years, attractive in terms of, I think, the, the marketability and the market for these kinds of properties at locations similar to these, along an interstate, along a major highway, high-traffic generators. The mixed use from a, just a real estate market standpoint is a good use these days. But at the same time, a mixed-use development, because of the mixture of uses, and particularly the ones that you have refined down to this, to this grouping, we find that their peak traffic hours don't necessarily match up with the peak traffic hour of the street. So you might have a particular use that's going to have peak traffic, but it's not going to take place at the time that, that the greatest amount of traffic is on the street already.
Yeah, but with traffic neutrality, we're letting them, we're letting them juice it up enough and make it large enough that it's going to, well, not exceed, but it'll, it'll get up there. That's, that's kind of my, my point.
Well, then, then the, the traffic neutrality, what we've, what we've also said in the ordinance with input from staff is, there are, there are no, we're not allowing for any kind of deductions from, from traffic generation calculations. The international transportation engineers' calculations will factor in or allow for the factoring in of, of deductions for the, the closeness, the proximity of, of transit facilities, for one. The ordinance says you don't get to take any deductions. Whereas in mixed-use development, there's quite often these interrelationships between uses, like someone staying at a hotel because they've got a week's worth of work at this particular office that's on the same site or right next door. They don't have to get in their car. They can walk to work each day, even though they're a visiting employee. So, you know, you, you generate some of those interrelationship traffic reductions, and then the transit availability would also generate some usage. It's very difficult these days to figure out just how much that usage would be. So we haven't allowed for any of those to be deducted, but we know in some shape or form, there will be at least some traffic benefit from the interrelationships of the uses and the proximity of the transit. So while we're saying traffic neutrality in terms of the calculations, we would expect that the actual results would be a reduction.
I need a little more clarification. The existing conditions versus the proposed, we're taking actual traffic counts?
No.
So we're taking no reductions on the existing conditions either?
We're taking proposed traffic counts as though this was a maxed-out development, already existing. In this specific instance of 475 or 35,000 square feet.
But we're doing it based on the design, on the use?
Based on what they can, you know, what they can do under current ordinances right now, what that traffic would generate if it were existence today, that's the number we're using that we, as the baseline to calculate traffic neutrality.
So we're not using...
So it'll go up.
So we're not using any reductions either way, so that kind of cancels out. We're not, you know what I'm saying? If it's a Model A and Model B, and Model B isn't allowed to use any trip reduction, but Model A doesn't use any trip reduction either?
But the theory is Model B generates trip reduction.
But I mean, the, the train is there now. So the transit reduction would be available to the existing conditions as well as the proposed.
He's not taking credit for transit.
Right, but you're not taking credit in the existing condition either. And it exists.
Correct, correct. When, when you, you're right.
So it's really not that big of a difference.
When, when you calculate, the way I understood it from April, if they could build 475,000 square feet of office, that generates X amount of traffic. That's the base.
Right, but that base has no trip reductions. Neither does the proposed have trip reductions.
They don't need this ordinance to build 475,000 square feet of office.
Right, but what I'm saying is our basis for comparison doesn't use those trip reductions either.
When you say basis for comparison, what do you mean comparison?
Our, our base traffic.
The 470. So if, if, let me use some real numbers. So, this is a good question. I don't know the answer, but, so if we can develop 475,000 square feet today, and at peak in the morning, I'm just using one because I don't want to double up. It generates 1,000 vehicles. That's the ITA without, is trip reduction baked into that number? That's the ITA without, is trip reduction baked into that number or not?
No, it's not.
Okay, now, so they can do 1,000, they get no trip reduction. So, under, if they move to Plan B, they can do 1,000 trips per day based on the ITA manual. However, they're actually going to, both are actually going to do less because there will be some savings.
Of course, why?
Both will be less because they will get some savings from trip reduction based on transit and based on, and based on similar, you know--
Use.
Different uses that have some synergies that require less driving. So both will get trip reductions, but it won't be used in the calculation.
The baseline--
Baseline.
The baseline is only one use, however. It's just general office use. Whereas the proposed development is a mixed-use development under this ordinance. So that there are no inner relationships when it's the current PLO or it's all general office use in all the buildings. There are no inner relationships of different uses, so there is no traffic reduction that would take place under the baseline. But with mixture of uses under proposed, there would be inner relationships where you would get a reduction.
However, the baseline is the worst-case scenario. We're looking at the maximum traffic, right? I mean, office is like the biggest peak generator.
On a, per 1,000-square-foot basis, it's not. A number of these off, a number of these other uses are higher.
You're saying medical office is a higher producer?
A medical office that's strictly a doctor taking patients and they're coming in for treatment would generate more than a general office does. A facility like Penn Medicine is proposing, because it has a whole mixture of subuses within its facility. I think they're going to tell you, they're going to try to demonstrate that those uses both don't generate the same numbers of visits as each other do, as well as they generate them at different times of the day.
So I--
But medical office, I mean, a strict medical office, a retail shop, a bank, a restaurant will all generate more trips per 1,000 square feet than an office. Obviously, office buildings are much larger than those other uses. So on an overall, they're going to be generating a fair amount of traffic, but on a 1,000-square-foot basis, they won't.
It'll also be the time of day, too.
Correct.
So restaurants' peak hours probably 6:30 to 7:30. The office' peak hours, 4:30 to 5:30, or something like it.
Right.
Yeah, but this still allows them, according to traffic neutrality's definition, to still equal that. And it still says in here that as long as it doesn't exceed it, so in other words, what's, I don't see what the incentive is and why it's called neutral if it still can equal what the baseline is. I mean, I don't see the incentive to go less if it gives me the ability to still match it.
Oh, no, they can, they can go up to and equal to what the baseline would be. What the anticipation would be is that the, these inner relationships of a mixture of uses, I mean, Penn is talking about, you know, at least they were hoping for the other portion of their property to include a restaurant. To have a restaurant, then, means that visitors, staff have a place to eat during the day. They don't have to get in their cars and go somewhere.
And you might, you're probably going to end up with more cars going through there each day.
Yeah, and I think we're--
However, they'll be spread out during the day, so you're not going to impact and go into that funnel time and the morning and evening drive time where they stack up more. It'll be more spread out during the day. You're still going to have a lot of traffic. And remember, right now, there's nobody in there. And we're crawling through that intersection. So it's on, it's definitely going to be worse, but hopefully, it's not going to be as bad as if it were all office building.
So I guess what we're coming to the same, all coming to the same point here, is that we'd rather see a reduction in the peak and maybe neutrality in the number of trips over the day. Because if you keep the peak the same, then you are going to increase the total number of trips. So I think what we're looking is a neutral total number of trips and a reduction in the peak would be preferable. Is that what I'm hearing?
Or we're going to be crawling like we are now from 7 o'clock in the morning till 6 o'clock at night.
Yep, all day. So, and the other piece about that, Steve, that we stopped talking about a long time ago, but I want to bring it back into the conversation, particularly because the issue of the height of the buildings, I know, came up at the Board of Commissioners meeting. I do believe that we should be talking about restricting, if we're even going to go forward with this, which I still have concerns about it, but, and my biggest reason that I have a concern is that I think the applicant who we keep thinking about using this, I don't get any indication that they're intending to particularly use this, only in the sense that they can build 475, they're, you know, they feel they can already meet traffic neutrality. I don't know what we're going to get for it. And I think that north of, north of the train station, I think there's two properties back there that this could apply to, and it will bring a tremendous amount of traffic all day long to, through the, through the bridge that's very crunched, first size, and also bring a tremendous amount of height right up, budding up to the neighborhood up there. You know, as we're thinking about the PLO, I think we tend to think of the area that is from Lancaster Avenue up to the top of Penn Medicine, and, you know, go through the bridge and take a right on Matson Ford, and that is very residential back there, except for the one or two properties that are PLO. And so now imagine if we were all living on some of those streets back there that are pretty residential, and you look out your back window and all of a sudden, there's an 85-foot building. You know, so I do not think that this is appropriate north of the train tracks. There's a development there, there's office space, it's bad up there in the morning and it's bad up there in the evening, but it's quiet, a lot quieter on Matson Ford and Wending back in there the rest of the day. I mean, I drive around all day long. That part's, you know, not horrible most of the day until Elizabeth Point. I think we're just going to be bringing way more activity in there all day long. I don't, and height, that I don't think that any of them are going to particularly appreciate, you know--
Well, I agree.
So I think we have to rethink north of the, and I remember bringing this up at the time because I wanted to have a restriction that this, when, back when it was in its first iteration of mixed use, I wanted there to be a limit to, that this mixed use could be within X number of feet of the public transportation. Because I thought that that was, I mean, it's binary. You're either within 1,000 feet or 500, whatever the number could be, of the actual public transportation, or it's not. To the extent that, one of the things that could help us with this is if, is if the workers who might come, because that was the other conversation that we had about some of the mixed uses, that the hope is that some of the workers who might work in a hotel, work in a, an adult facility, that they would be perhaps more likely to utilize some of the public transportation nearby, so that that's going to, could help this situation. You know, if it's more than X number of feet from the train station, that likelihood is, drops dramatically. So I just don't want to lose sight of that piece of this.
Steve, what else? I mean, we can come back to this, and I'm like, we're not done with it, I know that, but what else is there?
I guess, I guess as far as height goes, I think there was, the Matson Ford property already has buildings on it that are very close to the 85-foot limit that's in this ordinance currently. So, I mean, it's a comparable--
How close is close?
Like a story away?
So 65 feet they're high?
65, 70 feet.
I thought it was taller. I thought it was taller. What's there? Is that, are those buildings three or four stories?
He thinks Matson Ford is 65 to 70 feet. I don't--
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, if it is, we have to take into consideration the topography there, too. I mean, it's dropping downs, and the tree heights that we can get in this area, I think, are all a big factor of how much we can build there.
The other thing that the Planning Commission had, had asked for is a, is a, I guess, a graded setback for buildings, for anything, essentially, we ended up with anything over 45 feet in height, any portion of a building that's over 45 feet in height has to be set back a greater distance from any residential properties. So that, you know, that's in your provisions. Any facades that face a side or rear property line adjoining a residential district or residential use, any portion of the facade over 45 feet high shall be stepped back, a required setback a distance of one foot for every two feet above 45 feet. So you'd have an additional 20, you know, up to 20 feet additional setback along residential properties. So that was, you know, that was something the Planning Commission had expressed concern about and added that--
Can, while you're on that note, can we also make sure that, you know, whatever the height may be, that the signs in all of the sign ordinances do not project over top of a residential area? Can you imagine an 85-foot building with an illuminated wall sign under the cornice? So, well, I don't, that's what I'm looking for, that's what I've been reading. Does it say it can't project over a residential area?
It can't be illuminated.
But it may be illuminated, but shall not blink, flash, or be animated.
Where are you reading that one?
That's the wall sign.
The wall sign--
Yeah, but a wall sign is not, can't be 15 feet above the--
Great.
Did that change? Did illumination get added to the wall sign? Because that was--
No, that's always been that way. The illumination was taken out of the corporate, the business development signs. Sorry, corporate identification signs, because they're the, they're the large ones. Shall not be illuminated in any fashion.
Right, that's the thing that's at the top of the building. The wall sign can't be at the top of the building.
No, correct.
The building can only be its logo or something.
Right, no, so Elizabeth four--
Logo identification.
Four--
15 feet in height, I read it as 15 tall sign, not 15--
No, it can't be 15 feet, the sign height means it can't be 15 feet, above 15 feet above the ground. Yeah.
Anything else, Steve?
I guess one other thing, at least in terms of Matson, the Matson Ford property, we measured if there were any places where that additional setback for any portion of a building above 45 feet would apply, and there are none. There's some, there's some, there's some good distance between property lines and residential uses or residential zoning.
Do you know that Carroll's residential? Archbishop Carroll is zoned residential?
I was looking at the zoning map.
Yeah, okay, and so that, it covers that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I think, I think Matson Ford has some buffering existing, not to minimize what's being said here, but just to give you a sense of how we looked, how we tried to look out for the residential properties nearby.
All right. What I'd like to do is kind of just make up a list of items that we need to come to some kind of conclusion on?
I've got a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
We can ask more questions, sure.
All right, well, I've got, I'd like to go to page six, B5, dimensional regulations.
Yes.
Buildings, comma, structures, comma, surface parking areas. What kind of structures, other than buildings, are we talking about? Parking structures?
Yes.
Well, I think we, we had some--
Any structures. Parking structures, utility structures, HVAC structures.
There was an issue that came up, I forgot exactly in what connection, a couple of months ago, where there was some question about, maybe more than a couple of months ago, some question regarding ambiguity. Parking structures seems to be a term, specific terminology, and maybe it should say structures including parking structures. I just want to make that clear.
Excepting parking structure.
Say again?
I was going to say that. Four. Accessories, that's including parking, garage, and structure. Number four.
Okay.
Page six. Is that what you mean?
Okay, I'm okay with that.
And a question I have while we're talking about parking structure, is a parking structure considered a building?
Yeah.
Because, do we say that somewhere? Because I think it was something we've seen, Villanova seems to stick in my mind, where we were looking impervious, and a parking structure was not a building at that point.
Was that Cabrini?
So I think we need, actually, I have it back here in the other stuff. I circle it with that question, let me find it. You can go on other questions, I'll find it and come back.
I want to add--
But the way it's written here, does it cover your concern?
Actually, let him look it up.
Okay.
Does it cover your concern, though? The way it's written here? In three?
Just going to say, both the terms are defined in your current ordinance.
Which two?
Building--
Four.
And structure. They both have individual definitions.
Well, I think that's what gets us in trouble. They almost need to be defined, or together, unless you're using the word "building" on both.
The definition of "structure" says anything constructed or erected on the ground or attached to the ground, including but not limited to buildings, sheds, manufactured homes, and other similar items. And Steve, also, you kind of clarified in, back on page six. You talk about five and six. It says building structures, surface park, and all of it, but then number six says maximum building area, no more than 30% of the area may be covered by buildings and structures, which kind of refers to five. So you kind of define it twice.
Yeah, I think that's where my question was. Because I wanted to make sure that the amount of ground coverage includes parking structures.
Yeah, the only thing that they're not included in is gross floor area. That's specifically excluded on the page before. That a parking structure is part of the impervious, but it's not part of the gross floor area.
Because it isn't, it isn't--
No, I know that, that's right, that's where the distinction is.
But it is a structure. I mean, it's very definitely a structure.
Okay.
By just going through five and six.
Steve, I had a question on that same page that John was looking at. And it had to do with Peter's note on the side with regard to, it's the bottom comment where it says, "See the above comment about lot coverage." And I'm not catching what he's speaking about here, when he's talking about number seven, maximum site coverage. Do you see his note to the side?
Yes, I do.
And I think that had to do with the conversation that we were having a month, well, two months ago, because I wasn't here last month, about making sure there's a distinction, you know, are we, I didn't want to inadvertently create a loophole where we talk about site coverage in one area and lot coverage in another area. Is that what Peter's refer, I don't know if that's what Peter was referencing here, but I don't see his comment about lot coverage.
He's referring back to page two.
Oh, above his pages before.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just for kind of--
Thank you.
FYI, there is definitions between a site and a lot. One is, one is an improvement, improved parcel of land, and one is an unimproved parcel of land. So you kind of have to distinguish when you're talking about a site, which is, I believe the site is unimproved, Steve?
Site's not defined in our zoning, that's the problem, Charlie.
Right, that's the problem, right.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was bringing up last month, is that we're using a word in our, in this ordinance that is not defined in our ordinance. That was my concern.
I think you had to define them both, so when you talk about them--
Yeah, lots defined, site isn't. That was why I mentioned it a couple of months--
Site is being defined.
No, I'm sorry, not in our original zoning book, that's what I mean. But you put it into ours.
And I think, yeah, and what we also did was not only that one, but moved most of the definitions proposed in the ordinance to a section that limits these definitions to PLO zoning only.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Right. I have one overriding conference, question for you, which is, what feedback have you received from Penn Medicine in terms of pushback on the proposed ordinance as written? Because I haven't seen that yet. I know that you had made mention in a memo or two ago that you had spoken to several landowners and you were getting some feedback, but then I recall that you didn't specifically have feedback from Penn, and I'm curious if you've since received that feedback. And where are the, where are the pressure points? Because that's, you know, that's not, that's something we should at least be aware of to understand.
Sure, sure. The feedback from Penn, and I've had a couple of sit-down meetings with them back a few months, and the pressure point, I think that's a good, a good term, was the percentage of floor area, those floor area percentages. Because they wanted to be able to do their facility, but anticipated that at least the, perhaps the first type of other use that would, that would come to mind for the other half of their-- of their property would be general office. So those, those percentages were part of the discussion. And they were here last month to hear the discussion of the Planning Commission talking about, you know, 65% seemed to be okay for a first use, but we've got three uses and we want them to be meaningful, significant square footages for all three of those minimum uses for the larger sites. So I haven't had any, any discussion with, with the Penn folks since that meeting on this, but they should have at least seen, you know, where the changes have been made to know what, you know, what's being asked. It doesn't affect what Penn wants to propose. It would impact somewhat what they're showing on their sketch plan right now for the other half of their property. They're showing almost all office with a small, a very small amount of retail. That office amount would have to shrink the amount of a third use, whether it's retail or something else, would have to increase in order to meet these revised floor area percentages. Otherwise, you know, they have, in their sketch plan, asked for the reduced, yeah, the reduced in size setbacks, which expands their, the, the available footprint. They've been okay with the, the increased amount of green space being required of them as compared to the current PLO standards. And we've had some discussion about the building design standards, which has helped, along with Lloyd's architect and our own architects that were too, we've been able to refine those, and I think everybody seems to be pretty comfortable with those. So that's been the nature of the feedback from Penn. I don't want to speak for Lloyd, but he was here last month and felt, and I think indicated a pretty good comfort level with the ordinance. Brandy Wine has given us a, a very short email saying that they really have no feedback because they don't believe this ordinance gives them any redevelopment avenues for their properties, and that would include the Mattson Ford property. So that's the extent of the, the feedback that we've gotten from them. We did meet with them a year and a half ago, when we were really in the, you know, the fact gathering stage at that point, to hear what their concerns had been with the must ordinance, what ideas they thought, you know, made sense from a market standpoint and, and the ordinance. But, you know, as, as we went through it with this board, you know, the second half of last year, we haven't had any more feedback from them, other than the email that I mentioned.
Do you happen to know if Penn's buildings are going to be 85 feet tall? Do they need that height?
Yeah, I think they are proposing that height for, for their main medical complex facility.
All right, thank you.
Yep. And they've asked, well, I guess they, you know, we identified that they were going above what's the current ordinance allowance in the review letters. I think everybody did, and they pointed that out.
Something just struck me when you might compare this to Villanova, the CICD and things like that. To the extent that you use the overlay to do the medical building and you defer development of the office building for two years, could you just use the existing ordinance and not the overlay for the office building two years from now in terms of setbacks and traffic neutrality, et cetera?
I mean, the, this, I don't think so, because you have to do a mixed-use development.
But what if you don't develop the whole parcel? Yeah, but just, you're still locked in once you, once you go the, all the way up. Now, I would think if they didn't take advantage of any of the ordinance provisions, architectural or height or spacing, things like that, then, then they would leave their options open. But if they, I, I mean, you tell us, Steve, I mean, if, if they go down this path and they take advantage of the ordinance, they're locked in on the site.
Yeah.
I mean, it would depend on how they would choose to, to develop it. If they were to subdivide part of that, if they would subdivide the overall lot and create a second lot that they deferred development on, they could isolate the development plans now on the one parcel and come back later and do another parcel.
But they have to abide by the ordinance on the parcel they're developing.
Yeah.
Which means that they've got to have only 65% of that lot in medical use, which means they have to have come up with 35%, which wasn't in any plans we've seen. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, well, they have to, they have to follow, whatever ordinance is in place, they have to follow.
Right, so they can subdivide, that's okay, but what they put on their, whatever development they're doing, on whatever lot they happen to have, what legal lot they have, if they're going to use this ordinance, they have to abide by that ordinance.
And the 475 changes if they subdivide. It's much smaller, because the 475 was based on the 20 acres and all the existing setbacks of an, of an existing plan of a lot that's the entire lot.
So we should hope they subdivide.
That's correct.
Pardon me?
We should hope they subdivide.
Well, but, but, except that they can develop it now with medical office without this ordinance.
They can have the height and, and the setbacks and the architectural stuff.
I understand that, I'm just saying that, that they...
They have that ability, yes, they do.
Yeah, okay. But, yeah, no, they can't, it, be very clear, if they subdivide, the number goes way down, because that's based on a much bigger piece of property.
Yeah, and I know we talked about this before, and, and, you know, our feeling was that, you know, to go, to go smaller really restricts their ability to do a mixed-use development and do traffic neutrality. However, since that discussion, there have been some modifications coming out of discussions at the Planning Commission where the site's less than 10 acres, you can go with 99% office, or 99% medical, or 99% age-restricted multifamily. So, you know, with that in mind, I would suggest that we add a minimum lot size for the PLO, I mean, for mixed-use development. The PLO right now has a minimum lot size of 10 acres. So to, I mean, because I could envision then Penn splitting their lot, their parcel in half, being less than 10 acres, qualifying for the smaller size floor area percentages at 99% for one use, and doing it on both sites, which, which would really defeat the purpose of, of this ordinance.
So minimum lot size is 10 acres?
So we would, it is, in the current PLO zoning, it is 10 acres, and, and if we carry that over to the mixed-use development regulations, then, then I think it makes it very difficult to move ahead with a subdivision that you can meet the three minimum uses, the 65, 85% requirements.
And then there's just one existing non-conforming lot, the way that it's currently constructed.
And if, and if we, and if we carry that over for mixed-use development, and the PLO already requires a minimum of 10 acres, they won't be able to subdivide because they'd be creating a non-conforming lot.
Currently, it is 10, and you want to maintain it.
I want, I want to extend that to the mixed-use development.
That's a good, that's a good point. I'm sorry, I'm having this conversation.
And they're, they have, I think that what they're using is 19 acres for this development, that number, not the 26, the biome that was trying to push there.
That's right.
So if they take anything off it, they fall, pretty much fall below that on both of them.
Yeah.
Or at least one of them, which would put them into normal development.
Mm-hmm.
Can we circle back one more time to Wonderful Traffic?
Sure.
Actually, Skip, can, if you don't mind, can, any other questions, comments, concerns? I'd like to get those cleared out.
I just want to voice a concern about the, along with what Susan already talked about regarding the height of the building. And the more I think about it, and I've thought about it a lot since the last, our meeting in April, I really come around to the belief that 85 feet is just simply inappropriate for that area. It just doesn't go with Radnor Township. I mean, we don't want this area here to look like King of Prussia, if we can avoid it. And we can avoid it if we, if we, if we stick to our guns on these, with some height limitations. Eight stories is really, really a lot. I don't...
But I think we have it, like the one across from Giant property there.
We might have it, but we don't need anymore, is what I'm...
Can we just table this for now? What I'd like to do, I'd like to get all the issues out that we need to then have further discussion on and get those defined. We do need still public comment, not sure if there's going to be much. And then I'd like to go through those items one at a time, so we can then make a decision on each item, light item, and then there, from that, we can get a motion, if that's okay.
I have one, I have one question, page 10, 63D1. Did we take a, did we actively reduce the size of the parking, all parking spots to nine by six, nine by 19? When did we do that? A while ago?
It's, I think it's in the PLO.
The existing PLO? No, we, initially, the, the parking garage could be nine by 19, and it has now been changed, and I can see it's in last month's as well, that all parking spots can be nine by 19.
Well, I think I have an answer, but I got to, I got to look through this.
Okay, I'm just wondering what the rationale was. I know what the rationale was inside. Steve, I think Steve Cooper wants to gather all questions. I'm, put a pin in that question. You don't have to answer it now, it's a pin.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Okay. Or areas of, of new concern, you know, new...
Well, these are...
I have a question, Tom.
Okay.
Yeah, come on.
All right, go ahead.
The, how many sites are there that are 10 acres or...
Three.
Three, okay. Another question is, why on the, if you're trying to encourage mixed use, are you limiting the multifamily? How did that come about?
Limiting it to what?
Limiting it to age-restricted or the percentage? Because that's all anybody, that's all... We proposed multifamily development and we got shot down.
The vote was three to six.
Yeah, they're concerned about the stress on the school, school district.
You still think what? Yeah, I did. I was part of the three. Skip and I were part of the three.
Should I give you my question?
We had a vote about the apartment use and...
Doug, Skip, and I were supportive of having families.
With Doug, yeah, and that got kicked out. Everybody else said they didn't want it, so we don't have it.
My concerns, and I voiced it before, is the amount of parking spaces required for medical office. And on one, page five, number two and number eight, the indoor health and fitness center there, is that open to the general public, and that also has major parking problems in a lot of development shopping centers where there is a fitness center. Unless there's sufficient parking there, it really takes over all the parking.
Is it possible to designate that as for only the building inhabitants?
Well, in, in the other uses, where it's part of, for example, the age-restricted or the hotel and stuff like that, it is specifically limited to those, but then you have this...
Can we say the same for the, for if it's in an off, like, I mean, I'm in an office building, it's not open to?
I think that would be fine also, and it does mention that, but then you have it here as a use under this category. So if it's mentioned...
Should we say it's only an accessory, accessory use?
Then why is it here at all in this part?
It's, that's been part of the discussion from, from the beginning, and I think because of its, it's a different kind of use with a different peak hour, that was, I think, an important part of it.
Yeah, and that's been brought up before also, but the...
Kathy, would you rather it be as an accessory to the existing use only?
I'd rather see it the way it's listed in the other sections, as it can be in the off, the medical office building, for use for those particular people only, or in the hotel for those people, as opposed to a plant at fitness.
I just have a question, though, Steve. They, in essence, does it, is this a true statement? It doesn't really matter what the use is because they have to meet traffic neutrality? I mean, besides from the percentages, so this, this is a high use?
Yeah, but look at the enforcement. Who's going to enforce that?
Well, no, no, when they do, when they do the, when they do the traffic neutrality from the ITA, there's no enforcement afterward.
Steve, there's traffic and there's parking. Kathy's talking parking.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Yeah, Kathy's talking parking.
The other, the other thing is they would still count as their...
No, no, I got confused, I made a mistake.
But if they...
I think the answer is accessory use.
Yeah, because it would still count as a diversification, it would still enable to count as diversification, right?
Yeah, I'm fine with accessory use, but not as a specific use, so that you can have a 20,000-foot building as a plant at fitness, for example.
The, you know, the, the, the concept with, with traffic neutrality and the mixed-use development is that, and the more restrictive green space requirement, is that the developers, and this, this also applies to the height concern. When, when you try to put a mixed-use development and get, and get square footage that works out from a value standpoint, from the property owner's perspective, it's a challenge to get that amount of space on there and meet the green space requirement, which is increased from the current PLO. And so they'll, they'll have to think long and hard about a fitness center that's, that's a freestanding fitness center because of its parking demands, because they're going to need, they're going to need not only stormwater, but they're going to need a green space, a lot of green space. And they won't be able to afford a lot of uses that use up a lot of that green space with parking. And, and the height is kind of a similar issue. I mean, we, we, we made them put more green space on this property and make a lot of it be out front, as well as within the interior, but be out front along King of Prussia Road. And in exchange, allowed for this 85-foot height. It, it puts them in a, in a pretty tight box still. They're able to spread out on the site, but then there's a lot more green space in between buildings, and, but that height is, is necessary in order to get the square footage that kind of balances out everything. I mean, I'm not arguing to make everybody wealthy through this, but at the same time, we want it to be desirable enough that they use it and we create a mixed-use zone.
Yeah, and the thing, the thing you have to understand is, if you, if you make it so that it's, it's unreasonable, the courts will give it to them. So you got to make a plan that's reasonable, that kind of puts them, puts them in a box, all right, and to get out of that box, they got to prove hardships. If you make it so restrictive that it doesn't really seal the top of the box, they'll get out real quick.
I, I don't agree with that, because it's an overlay and they still have the option of the existing zoning, so they, there's no hardship there. This is an option, this isn't a requirement, we're not changing the zoning, we're giving them additional options. And I agree with Kathy about the fitness center. If it is an accessory use to another use, does that, but does that provide them diversification? Does that count towards their percentage?
Well, it would, it would, it would, as an accessory use, it would be permitted. It would draw at least some usage of a health, fitness center to whoever is close by. Well, if you, if you're restricted to...
Like in my current building, it's only open to the building inhabitants.
So those inhabitants would not get in their car and go across to 555 Lancaster Avenue to that one.
Right, so in our, in our ordinance, would they get credit for that additional use? So, or would that still be considered all office?
No, that would be considered an accessory use, a limited accessory use, so that would not be one of the three minimum uses. No.
Okay. Is there any way we can use that to help them with their percentages without making it open to the public?
Well, it starts to get really, I think, a little, a little complex, and we've, we haven't, we've done that with, with the, the restaurants.
Like the restaurant inside of a hotel.
And the retail. We've made them, we've limited them to only be within those other buildings. We haven't allowed for any freestanding restaurants in the ordinance now. And the same, the same said for retail.
But it's not so much the freestanding, it's, it's the access. I think you could put a whole first-floor gym and then have a totally different use above it, and you're still going to have those parking issues that Kathy's referring to.
Yeah, but don't we have a parking ordinance that handles that?
This is, Kathy, it's a very good point. If you go to any gyms in Radnor, and they may meet the code, there's a parking problem. I don't know what it is, if our code just doesn't handle that properly, but I see, after you pointed it out, I see it everywhere. So the other thing is too, it is, it's, it's going to have a lot more trips generated if it's open to the public than if it's for the current users of the site. So if it's a user of the site, they're already there. If it's a member of the public, they're going to come and go, and every hour or so, you're going to have somebody new coming and going. It's a different, it's a very different...
Well, the user of the site, or the, you know, the users... Well, the user of the site or the, you know, the users from the site might be a difficult thing to manage for the, for the health and fitness center, to be able to determine. I mean, if it's in one building, let's say a, an age restricted facility, they're able to issue cards for all the residents. But if now we're talking about other buildings on the site, then it gets a little bit, you know, more difficult, I think, for the health and fitness center to manage who's allowed to use it and who isn't. That would be my, you know, my only concern.
I think we just have to.
The accessory.
We just have to make a decision on this one. I mean, which way we want to go.
I, I think Kathy's right that we shouldn't leave it as a free use.
I don't want your decision right now.
Oh, okay.
I want to put, this is on the list. This is a pin. The pin's in it. I think the discussion's closed. The pin's in it. We have enough information.
Let's just let the air out of it and vote on it, so we don't have to go back to it.
Yeah. I, I know. Let's just get, get, get all the stuff out. I want to get this done, then we'll go through them. Well, I and I have them one at a time. We'll have a discussion. We'll take a vote.
Steve, I have a question. So I, and I apologize I missed last month. I think that Mr. Goodman had made a comment that he has actually not been able to find a, a working, functioning, traffic neutral, traffic neutrality project. And I'm just wondering if, are, is this really like the first one?
Yeah, I have an.
I, I think it may be, and I, I, I've looked too. I haven't seen.
I mean, we've, we've looked, but we haven't talked to all fifty states or anything, you know, like that.
Okay, and then the, the notion of the mixed use. Do you have personal experience where the mixed use actually did relieve the traffic? Because I think the concern that is at the heart of this and why you're probably hearing so much about the traffic and the whatever, is that at the heart of it, we are concerned that all this is going to do is, is make more, is going to spread what's a nightmare from, you know, seven fifteen to eight thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Go on all day long. Because that's, you know, and I'm thinking specifically King of Prussia Road, where I know from years of experience of driving there, if you get there at seven-ten, it's fine. You get there at seven-twenty, and it's a nightmare. And it's a nightmare for a good hour, more easily. And that the, because the combination of, the thing we haven't talked about, which is really very interesting in terms of the uses and the ITE, and there's been no mention of ITE, and we can put a pin in it, Steve, is the high school traffic. There's been no talk about, of the eleven hundred kids who attend that high school, probably seven hundred of them get driven to school every morning. And, yeah, I'm, or drive themselves, combination. And so that's been a significant piece of the traffic, and it's going to continue to be a significant piece of the traffic. And we haven't really talked about that, and there's nothing to do about it because it's not, unless we do change the start time for high school, which has been a different conversation. So, anyway, we'll put a pin in this, but I think that, so mixed use experience, that's my question for you when we get to the pins.
No, you can answer that one now.
Experience in, I mean, yes.
She wants to know if it really works.
I mean, does it really work in terms of?
Trip reduction.
Yes. There, there are trip reductions that occur from a mixture of uses because of the, because of either interrelationships or just different peak hours for the uses versus the street.
Well, I agree with that, and I've seen, and I've seen that that's true. However, by definition, the way we're setting this up, we're not reducing.
Pin. Any other agenda items?
Okay.
Now, I'm just going to review the pins to make sure we're all in agreement with those.
One other one, the illuminated sign. I'm still not a fan of, I thought actually we were going to say they couldn't go facing the Blue Route, but I don't know where that went.
They're not. Those are two different signs.
Illuminated is only like, for like, coming in the driveway, you know, parking garage.
They're not the ones on the building?
There are signs on the building, but they're not illuminated.
But those are not illuminated? Oh, thank you.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, pin out. All right, so these are the pins I have. I've got the eighty-five foot height. I've got the remove outpatient surgical center use as a maximum thirty percent use. We're obviously going to talk about traffic neutrality. We're going to extend the minimum lot size into the new PLO for ten acres. Stephen brought up the apartment, and then Kathy brought up the athletic club as an accessory use or as a primary use.
And I brought up parking, parking lot size.
Parking lot size.
Parking space size.
Parking space size. Okay. Is there anything else I missed?
Well, I've been trying to bring up traffic because in April, I proposed something that didn't get any traction and maybe it won't tonight. If the mixed use is economically desirable, and maybe there could be benefits for both. In other words, instead of pure traffic neutrality, I floated the idea of maybe ninety percent traffic neutrality, so a lesser number, that the mixed use would be hopefully capable of generating and still have a high yield for the developer. So maybe it's still dead, but I brought it out again. That's what I wanted to bring up earlier.
What, what do you mean ninety percent?
Well, if, if the baseline's a thousand, in Steve's example, then it's maybe instead of a thousand, it's nine hundred.
Oh.
In a mixed use setting.
I like that.
So that is a quote.
Starting with a lower number.
That also is the kind of politically good thing to sell to the, you know, the voting public that this is what we get. It would actually, it would be worse if they built the offices, but since we have the hotel and the senior center or senior living, we're going to have ninety percent of the traffic, unless this is so onerous that they, no one will elect mixed use. If that's the case, there's no point. I could pick a number and say fifty percent, and then, you know, nobody would build. But it seems to me that ten percent isn't that far off, and it's a quantifiable, small benefit for mixed use in terms of traffic that isn't in there now. That's all.
Keeping in mind that the overall daily number of trips will probably still be higher, even at a ninety percent reduction on the peak.
Steve, do you have any comments on that?
At, at traffic neutrality, it was a challenge to design projects on using the Biomed, PennMed site. It was, it was a challenge to meet traffic neutrality. I think at ninety percent, it's going to, well, it makes it tougher. I'm not sure where the breakpoint is. That's what the property owners would have to answer, is whether or not ninety percent is still doable.
But, you know, we, right now, you know, for example, Brandywine is not so excited about this, that they're going to tear down their office buildings and do mixed use.
Right.
It may be that the only project like this will be the Penn site. I'm just saying that, and I don't know the economics, and, you know, maybe our chairman knows it better than me, different uses have higher value per square foot. So would a mixed use development be more profitable, generally speaking, for a developer?
Feedback that I've gotten is that general office is probably as valuable as any, unless you're in a special industry like PennMed.
Yeah, I think medical office is higher.
Yeah.
I would assume with, you know, general office next. So restaurants are not appealing in terms of, you know, don't. Retail is, but it just represents such, so, it's just too small a percentage.
And, and those, you know, then you get retail and restaurant, you start, you really start using up your traffic allowance under traffic neutrality. So it's, yeah.
The only thing, the only thing that medical offices bring at higher values, if they're in proximity to a hospital or other medical offices. In other words, if, if you have just a general office, like potentially this site would be a greater value as a general office, only due to the fact that it's interconnects to the Blue Route and can get to Turnpike's Northeast, South and West. It's a distance from Bryn Mawr Hospital, so therefore, you know, it'd have to almost be a standalone medical facility like Penn is proposing. As you notice at Bryn Mawr, they build all those medical offices that are attached to the hospital. That, that makes that, those offices more valuable than a general office. All right, because they're, they're really site-specific. It's like, it's like a, building more retail spaces in the mall, because it brings people in and it's, it's just a general, and food courts, why they have so many restaurants conglomerated in one area, that, that system works. It brings potential guests and customers into an area that they can choose a bunch of different things.
All right, is there any public comment?
Um.
Okay. Let's just go, you know, if, obviously if we come up with something else, we can add.
Some of those uses might be real easy to knock off.
Well, I was going to start with parking. The parking space size.
That's a harder one, okay.
That's a maybe easy pin.
Parking spot size.
Spot size, thank you.
Yeah. We, we understood that, that the parking lot would contain smaller spaces in the garage, but it's written such that all the spaces will be smaller.
Roger?
What's this parking space size in the SADO right now?
It's, I believe it's ten by twenty. I don't, I'd have to go get the code to be sure.
Is it in SADO or is it?
It's in zoning.
It's in.
It's in, it's actually in zoning. And there's, and there's different sizes for different applications, like they mentioned earlier, in parking garages, they're smaller.
How many, how many spaces are there outside the garage, the parking garage? Do we know that?
We have no idea.
So we want to be consistent with the code. Is that what we would like?
The zoning ordinance doesn't, I didn't find any space, parking space size in it.
There, there is a parking space size I'm looking for.
I, my, my opinion, I think the rest of the world has moved to smaller spaces, and I'd be a proponent of it. I think, I would rather use our blacktop more efficiently and park more cars to eliminate the parking problem. And the biggest issue I think we're really grappling with is the traffic, and we're going to spend a lot of time dealing with that. But to me, that, that would be how we limit this thing, and if people are on-site, I'd rather not have them backed up. So, that's my thought on, on the sizes. I'm, I'm okay with the way it is.
Does that impact our ultimate yield? If we give smaller parking spaces, does that yield a higher level of development in some way? Does it make it more beneficial?
That's why I was asking about it.
More beneficial to the applicants in any way?
Well, they get, you know, they get spaces, the same number of spaces in a slightly smaller asphalt area.
Could provide some benefit to them.
Could be a little bit of benefit, but again, traffic neutrality is what's going to cap the intensity of the development, not the parking spaces. And a reduced asphalt area for parking means better stormwater for the township.
Parking stalls are nine, nine and a half by twenty. It's in, it's designed standards. It's in SADO.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So being unfamiliar with what's the standard these days, is that nine, is that nine where people are going?
Stephen, I mean.
Nine by eighteen.
Yeah, so we would be consistent with new development.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty, pretty standard, nine by eighteen, sixty foot wide.
And it could, and it could afford a little more flexibility to the development, but it's not going to change the overall yield on the site.
Not any.
Because it's not being driven by parking. Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
We're all good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so parking is, no, no, it's fine. I just wanted to cover it all.
I'm glad we clarified it.
Okay, I'm just going in, so let's talk about eighty-five feet. I know we spent a fair amount of time on this previously, and I know we gave the, the additional setbacks for residential on the eighty-five feet. John, you mentioned a concern with eighty-five feet. It seemed like it was everywhere. Susan, you were limiting it to north of the track?
Yeah, south of the, south of the tracks.
Limiting, right, south of the tracks. John, are you south of the tracks or everywhere? Where do you check in?
I'd be everywhere, only because I, if they're not, the north, on the other side of the tracks, the far side of the tracks from here, I, I wouldn't want rebuilding or redevelopment or new building to take buildings up to a, to a higher level. So I would, I would, I would not, I would put it across the entire area.
Okay, I think Susan, we, we kind of know where you checked in. Anybody have any thoughts on where?
I'm okay with the eighty-five feet for a couple of reasons. One, I think the Penn site is already sized like that. Two, I think Steve said that the two Brandywine sites couldn't be that tall because they wouldn't have enough room for the setbacks.
No.
No, you did not say that?
No, I said, I mean, Matson Ford is close to that eighty-five foot, maybe sixty-five to seventy in its current configuration, and I think two oh one Brandy, King of Prussia is at that height in its current configuration, and certainly five fifty-five West Lancaster is at that height.
I also think it's only seven parcels. And, you know, I don't have a problem with the eighty-five feet.
Does anybody have any more comments, or should we just take a little stroll of vote of how we feel about the eighty-five feet?
I'm okay with eighty-five.
What'd you say?
He's okay with eighty-five.
I think my, my biggest concern was just that the residential area, and I know that you have, as you get to a certain height past forty-five, you have to step back. So I wish that there were people here that could speak highly, more on exactly what the impact to those residences would be, but that would be my concern, is just the ones that back up along the backside of the Radnor Elementary School and all along there. That's it.
Yeah, it's, what's that? I'm sorry. Yes or no? Eighty-five feet. You got, you know, I'll come back to if you want to think a little more.
I'm still excited.
Okay, that's fine. You can pass.
I, I think because of where this building is and there are the buildings around at eighty-five, I'm okay with eighty-five. However, on the, if it's close to the residential, we're stepping back, I think, one foot for every two feet of height. I, I would like to see that setback a little greater if it's up against the residential area.
I'll go with you.
All right. Kathy, did you say something?
Kathy?
No, no. I'm, I'm sorry. I was looking at Kathy and I'm talking to you.
That's fine. I like the way she put it. That's kind of where I.
Okay, okay. Skip, we heard you. I'm okay with the eighty-five. So we have three okay and two modified eighty-fives with additional setbacks. Susan?
I, I think you all should read carefully the wording of the step back for forty-five feet.
Well, why don't you just tell us?
So I'm, I'm not okay with it north of the, I'm not okay with it north of the, the train tracks.
Okay.
I, I don't think that the.
Is there, I mean, is there something we missed that specifically?
So it says that it's the, just the building facade over forty, the, the side of the building, the facade that faces a side or rear property line which joins a residential district has to be stepped back. What, so the front facade doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be stepped back, but you're still going to see the back of the front of the building up eighty-five feet in a residential district? I don't, how's that going to work?
The front, there's a front yard setback requirement of a hundred feet, no matter what it's adjoining, and of course, they all adjoin streets. So then there's all the street, so that the front facade of a building is already going to be set back from an, from an, from an adjoining, from the, from the, across the street property, probably a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five feet. So that, that's why it only applies to the side and the rear. There is, Lower Merian has language that just says, any portion of a building must be set, stepped back, but I didn't go with that because the front yard's already being required, a hundred-foot front yard plus the street before you get to the property across the street. So it's already got a sizable setback.
Yeah, but what it's saying. But what it's saying is that any portion of the building facade shall, shall be stepped, well, I, I'm not sure that the wording's right, so.
The building has to be stepped back on the residential side.
Has to be stepped back on the residential side, but not on the street side. That's what I've heard.
Got it, okay.
Okay, yes.
Can I interject?
Okay, but you still want it north of the tracks, right?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
Can I, can I comment on that? Why can't you just illustrate this? I mean, why are we kind of guessing at the height? Just, you have software to do it and.
Sure, but.
Well, the height isn't changing. It's the setback that's changing. If it's, if it's in a residential area, it's not the height that changes, it's the setback requirement, right?
I know, but we should, we should illustrate it.
Correct.
And why are we guessing at it?
Well, see, this is the first time this has come up. This was, this was added to address.
No, I, I understand, yeah. I mean, I don't think we should guess at it. You can, you can bring in an illustration and say, this is what eighty-five feet looks like. Or this is what a hundred-foot setback looks like.
However, that would change depending on the elevation of both the building you're setting back and the elevation of the residential, because if your residential's higher, you're still going to see it no matter how much it's stepped back. If it's.
Well, I would presume you'd base it on the real situation.
But we're just trying to get further away from the residential area.
You're still gonna see the building.
Yeah.
Regina?
Yeah, initially, I wasn't a fan of the height, and we did discuss the additional setbacks for residential. And because of the fact that we're even entertaining maybe a reduction, maybe it's five, maybe it's 10% in the peak, we have to give something to make this ordinance usable. And I think that's a big part of what makes it usable with all the requirements, the green requirements and the setbacks and everything. Like you were saying, it's hard to get even, it's about, you know, we've, we've really restricted what can go in on the sites. And I think if we start talking about reducing that height, we're not gonna be left with a, an incentive anymore.
Okay.
John, I think we're okay with you. Stephen?
I don't have any problem with the height.
All right, that's five that are fine with the 85. So we'll leave that one be as is.
Okay.
Next, we talked about removing three EG outpatient cervical center use as a use.
Well, I think it's noted in another area there, and we didn't wanna, so it's kind of.
Well, it's, it, we don't wanna double up on medical.
Yeah.
So if, I feel like if there's another area we should remove it from, that's fine, but we're definitely gonna remove it from there.
What number was that?
The very last one.
Page nine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thanks, Susan.
Kathy, you were saying it was listed twice, so we have to remove it twice?
Well, I thought it was said that that usage is also under the medical, under the definition of medical office.
It's defined in medical office, that it could have a surgery center.
Yeah. The definition. So.
Medical office, at least, I'm okay with it being within the medical office use, but it can't be a re, a redefined use here.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So just remove 11 on this. And how about we?
Whoa, 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 11?
Oh, on page five, the outpatient surgery center? That's where we wanted to.
I think you would pick out EG, right?
EG, yes. It, it's still allowed in medical use, but where.
Not as a set, no, the, the point that was brought up earlier, and maybe I interpreted this wrong, that if you have an office building, let's say of 60%, and you have a medical office building of 20%, and then you have a surgery center of 20%, you're doubling up on the medical office building.
Right, but it needs to be just, if you remove it from EG, that solves our problem.
You can't, you can't take it from 11, because then they'd have, they would need a variance to use it in the medical office.
In the medical, yes, correct.
You can't take it out of there.
Okay.
You take it out of EG.
It has to be used by right. You gotta take it out of EG.
Take it out of EG, and it solves that problem.
Okay, whatever solves it.
So we're saying that.
No, I, I.
Okay.
First of all, you're saying, take it out of where?
Three EG, on page nine.
On page nine?
The, the very last.
So that you can't double up the 65% medical office, which could have a surgical center in it, and then another 30%, including a surgical center, so that you could have 95% of your use be medical surgical center, medical office slash surgical center.
Medical office, the definition of medical office includes surgical.
I know, but you've added, you've added that a surgical center in addition to what's in medical office. So you've said it can be in medical office. You've also said as an additional use, it can be its own use for 30%. So you then could have 65% medical, 30%, that's the way I'm reading it.
Right.
30% surgical and 5% office. In our mind, that's two uses, not three.
You're still capped at 85.
Right, but if you take it out of 11.
You're still capped at 85. Read the introductory paragraph.
But see, but under EG, it's, it's, it's own use. So it's a, that's the third use, so you're not.
But two uses can only take 85%.
Yeah.
The most you can do is 85%.
And what, what are the two uses?
Point is, we don't want 85% of medical.
No, that's why I gotta take it out of EG.
Right, yes, yeah.
I think, I think that's also why you take it out, you delete number 11.
No, you can't, you can't delete number 11, because then it's not a used by right.
Why can't it be a medical office?
It's, no, no, 11 is an outpatient surgical center by itself.
11 says outpatient surgical center.
By its, oh, by itself, and yes.
Yeah, that has to go.
The medical office is listed.
I, I see that now, yes.
Yeah.
I got confused.
They both have to go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause that, that's defined as its own use.
That's what I see.
In 11, yeah, good call. Thank you.
Page nine.
Well, since we're talking about medical.
Whoa, 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 let's make sure everybody's in agreement with this before we move on.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Okay, that one's defined. Do you have something you'd like to add, Susan, to the medical discussion?
Yeah, real quick on the medical discussion, a different back door that we're creating on page eight.
New pin.
New pin, but it's a quick pin, 'cause we've been talking medical. To allow a 99% medical office on a site less than 10 acres opens the door that Penn, the current Penn Medicine at Radnor could just become, just could just continue as a complete medical office, which will be all medical office. And I don't think that that's our intention on a site less than 10 acres. Medical office is too intense from a traffic standpoint. And, excuse me, because it already has a whole bunch of current traffic standards there, it would just be a continuation of what's there, but just a different, you know, Einstein could come in, or Temple, or somebody else could come in. Jefferson's already in Villanova.
The 99% is a maximum. It's an up to figure. So if they can't meet traffic neutrality at 85%, they're not gonna put 99%.
Where are you reading 85%?
I'm just using 85% as a hypothetical.
They have to meet traffic and traffic.
I understand that, but the traffic at that place already is already more than what we want, so it's not gonna be hard for them to meet what's already there.
What, what place are you referring to?
Penn Medicine at Radnor, the existing building, is a site that's less than 10 acres.
And when we do the baseline for traffic neutrality at Penn Medicine, which.
The current one.
The current one, which figures are we using?
The baseline is for a general office use.
General office use, and they.
In the existing square footage of the building that exists there now.
Right, and they exceed that use, correct?
Probably.
Okay, so we assume they exceed it, so.
And they would have to meet parking.
And they'd have to meet, if they're gonna redevelop and scrape the site and do it all over again, yeah, they have to meet setbacks and, and parking. So, I mean, there's, there's still all of those things that have to be put on the site.
And would a new user, like Temple, also have to meet traffic neutrality?
Otherwise, they can't use the overlay.
'Cause every, I mean, every time, now, if there's a use change on biomed, that has to go through this process. They have to prove that it's traffic neutral.
Right.
So if there's a change, unless somehow unbelievably they could prove it's identical to Penn Medicine on the old Penn Medicine building, theoretically, or actually, a new user like Temple would have to go through traffic neutrality?
Without any kind of redevelopment of the site occurring?
Yeah.
No.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure that they would have to, Skip.
Yeah, but they could do that today, with or without this overlay. It's not impacting.
The current Penn Medicine site is pretty jammed up on King of Prussia Road, but if, if this ordinance were, were adopted, and then, say, Temple University came in and said, "We wanna occupy that space, but we're not redeveloping in any form or fashion." They're not going through a land development plan and going through this process. Would they still have to, it's a change of use, which this ordinance is saying, with change of use, after someone has already done a land development plan, redeveloped a site, and redeveloped it with traffic neutral results, if the use changes in the future, they have to still demonstrate traffic neutrality.
Well, maybe, but I don't think so.
But if someone comes in and just wants to occupy without any kind of redevelopment initially, does that get them around the traffic neutrality kind of update?
Yeah, I think it would. Yeah, I think, as long as they're not redeveloping, that's what you're saying? Yeah, I think so.
It would be hard for me to believe that Penn would dump all these millions of dollars in this site and then put a competing medical facility down the street from it.
So I just was asking, it comes down to who owns that site. Does Penn own it?
I think Brandywine owns it.
See, we don't know who owns it.
I think, I think, I thought Penn.
Is Penn a tenant or is Penn an owner?
I thought Penn owns that site.
I don't know.
I think Penn owns that site.
All right, 'cause I agree with you, but I just, that's what I just said to Steve.
And I'm sure they're gonna do some kind of use restriction if they do in fact sell it to another person.
Okay, thank you. Then that's kinda moved.
Okay.
All right, so we're okay on that one? Do we, I forget, just tell, and cross it off. Do we talk, we're gonna add minimum lot size of 10 acres.
Yes.
We're on agreement with that, so that's checked off the list. Okay, Stephen, I think you had mentioned apartments, not limiting them to the 70% or whatever it is that we have with age. Let's just take another vote on that.
Okay the way it is.
Okay the way it is.
Say that? Say that again?
Three. So far, three are okay the way it is.
Of, of which one?
He wants to lift the age restriction.
Lift the age restriction.
Oh, yeah, I would be, I would lift it, same as Skip.
Stephen, lift?
Lift the age restriction?
In order to just make it.
Just make it a multifamily.
Multifamily, right.
Yes, I, I agree.
Now we're tied.
No, no, we're not with 5-4.
No, I like it the way it is.
Okay, that's it.
5-4.
Okay, it sticks the way it is. And then athletic club as a primary use or an accessory use?
Accessory use.
Accessory, accessory. Skip?
Accessory.
Three.
Accessory.
Okay, accessory carries.
And I would remove it from that, one of the uses there.
Well, it's a, let me, right, you understand, right.
They have to move it to accessory use.
Yeah, move from, out of primary to accessory.
Yeah.
With that, I think we're done.
Yay.
No, we're not done. What's the reduction in traffic gonna be?
So, oh, no, traffic, crap, the top one. All right, traffic neutrality.
I, I think we should ask for a recommendation that what's reasonable. Anywhere from 5 to 10% that could be achievable with the objectives that developers would still use the overlay.
And sellable.
Now, that's, that's, first off.
A tall order.
Well, no, let's just find out where everybody stands. Is everybody, some people okay the way it is, or do people want, you know, more of a reduction? So.
Okay the way it is.
Okay the way it is?
I would like to see a, someone at least look and try and figure out if we can reduce it, like she said, without affecting the potential for development, because I'm concerned that we're gonna have traffic all day long. So I'd like it to be looked at again.
I, in, as a practical matter, that's, this is why I'm gonna check in on that request. So as a practical matter, it can't be done. It's a gut, it's just a gut, it's feeling. It just, it, we can't study, and, "Well, if we reduce it 5%, we'll lose 10% of the business." I mean, we just, we just can't.
I understand for that.
There's not, there's nothing, ask the specific metric you want them to answer the question to. And I think what I heard is, I'm not, I just think we have to make a decision.
I'd like to see it less than traffic, what he's calling traffic neutral. I don't think that that's considered neutral.
Okay, so you wanna see a reduction of some percentage? Yeah, I, I just think we need to decide the number.
I don't think we're capable of saying what that percentage is. I think it'd be suitable.
Okay, and I, I just think, go ahead.
Is there a way to build in an incentive for developers to reduce the traffic, but increase they get something out of it?
We spent two years looking at, and we, at the end of the day, we all still ultimately feel like our gut is that the traffic is gonna be worse. I think that's why Elizabeth, Regina, I'm just gonna go along with the two of you. I think, I think that's why for two years we've talked about traffic.
We just, now, but now comes time to.
I would like to see a reduction.
And when you use the term neutral by saying the peaks won't go up, but the overall daily traffic goes up, that's not really neutral. So say your peaks come down and your overall goes up, and then that neutralizes each other. You know what I'm, I'm getting at there?
However, you have to realize that something's gonna go on this property, and right now it's unoccupied, and we have horrible traffic. So, something's gonna go in there, and it's gonna get worse. But I think one of the drivers may be, if it gets so horrible, and this is why I believe Brandywine was here, they'll lose tenants if they can't do something to control it, or you won't rent the property to somebody. Now, in this case, Penn is going in there, so they feel that they already have a miserable problem, but the other one, it can't be any worse maybe, but they'll have a bigger building. But I think we have to know and accept that the traffic is going to increase when this goes in there. If it can be spread over the day, it'll be a little less impact at drive time, but it's going to be worse. And there's nothing we can do about it, other than improve the roads, and I don't see that happening.
Yeah, but I don't know what you're getting at, actually. What are you?
We can't do anything about it, is what I'm getting at.
So you're saying you'd rather have the traffic spread throughout the day?
Yes.
But yet, that's not what we're putting in this ordinance. You do realize?
I think it is.
We're saying, maintain the existing peak.
Yeah, but I think it's referring to the morning, evening drive time. That's why you're putting mixed use in, because.
But the mixed use is not eliminating the peaks. We're saying you can go.
It's smoothing the peaks out.
If it's 1,000 in the morning.
Yeah.
It's 2,000 in the evening, then you say, "It's still 1,000 in the morning, it's still 2,000 in the evening, but maybe in the middle of the day, instead of 400, it's gonna be 800."
Correct, yes.
So we're actually increasing traffic. So that's my point. So, so the way we have it written today, it's not really neutral.
If we don't pass.
That's true, yes.
If we don't pass this, they'll build a 450, 75,000-square-foot office complex, and you'll just get the traffic without anything else.
And you'll get the same amount of traffic that if we.
No, you'll have worse traffic. You'll have worse traffic at rush hour.
We'll have the same as written.
We'll have the same as written.
No, no, traffic neutrality goes away. If you don't pass this ordinance or the overlay, traffic neutrality only applies in the overlay.
But as it is today, they're allowed to build that amount of office.
Right.
With the overlay, as we put it today, they're allowed the same amount of traffic tomorrow with the overlay as they are today with the office.
But I think what Skip's trying to say is that they can build the office, and, and the traffic will just go up, to your point, to, to 1,500 in the morning and 2,500 in the evening, which is, which is worse.
Right, you know, what, what the, what the mixed use does.
That's their baseline, though.
Is kinda, kinda level it out more, so that, so that the people can, as Steve had said earlier, that there might be a restaurant there, so people, if there's no restaurant or no eating facility, the people in the office building will now have to leave the office building, which now pumps up the traffic. So the mixed use, you kinda have different things happening at different times. So you're spreading, there's gonna be more traffic over, over the course of the day, but it'll be less traffic at peak times, your hopes.
But by definition, we're allowing them to develop up to that peak traffic.
Yeah.
By definition.
Right, right. You're allowed to, but the real world, I'm sorry. Regina's right. At least, and I'm gonna go through the list of benefits that you told me you were, you were gonna get, right? So we're gonna get, we are not, what Regina says is correct, isn't that correct? That we're gonna have this, theoretically, okay, so there's an AM peak of 1,000 cars, and there's a PM peak of 1,200 cars, let's just say. And that's what they're allowed to do today. They will allow to hit one of those maximum. Well, they can hit both of them. They can, both, both of them, but it, it's kinda, it's unlikely you're gonna hit both, right? I mean, how perfect would that be, right? So they're gonna get as close to they can as each one of those, and that's what they're allowed to do. And in the middle, the 500 cars in the middle will go up to 600 cars or 650 or whatever. So, so that will happen. And for that, we get a less, a higher development with more green space, and we get whatever benefit accrues from the mixed use component of those the mixed-use component of those two. They're the benefits... I just want to be clear on what's going on.
Something pretty to look at while we sit in traffic. That's what we're getting at.
Forget that. No complaining, okay? We can't complain now. Okay? So that's the benefit. Is that so far correct?
Yes, and...
So that's the trade-off we're making, and what... I just want to be clear about where things stand right now. So that's the trade-off. And the real question we have to ask ourselves, is that okay? Or do we want to impose a 5%... Request a 5% reduction in the peak? 10%? Or no reduction? But, yeah. Along that line, Steven has said that it's sort of his gut reaction that mixed use does result in less traffic at peak times compared to pure office.
But we'll have more of it to come back up to that peak.
Not necessarily. It's still 475,000 feet. It's just this form or that form. No, but see, that's... I think that's... Conceptually, that's, I think, where you're making a mistake. Because it will... That's true. So 450,000 feet of mixed use will generate less traffic than 450,000 feet of just pure office. However, the pure office that generates 1,000, we're allowing so much density by them going higher that they will hit the 1,000. So we don't get anything, really, by that. The only benefit we get is the better-looking development, and we get the benefit of maybe more valuable real estate, and we also get the benefit of less square... Less... More... Less homogeneous real estate, so we have more mixed use, so we have less office tenants and less competition. And then we also get the benefit of whatever synergies they are between the competing... The mixed uses on the site. But those chip generations are not taken into account.
And the mixture...
The benefits of them.
I mean, the mixture of uses also can provide some uses to the community that may not be in as great a supply as they currently are. And the other thing about the traffic is that, I guess a good example might be the age restriction, any kind of multifamily development. It's not only how much occurs in a peak hour, and whatever the peak hour is of the use, but especially in that case, it's the direction of the traffic. It's the direction the vehicles are moving. When... At a time when everyone is coming into work in the office building, the folks... The predominant movement for folks in the multifamily is out. So...
About that?
Yeah, and me, too. And so you've got... While, you know, that extra traffic in those non-peak hours may be there in terms of numbers, but in terms of the direction and then the flow on the street, it may be... It doesn't necessarily add up to a hugely increased burden for the system, because we're now using a portion of the system that doesn't have as much traffic on it to begin with.
We're also forgetting that... So the sketch plan that we saw for Penn was like 470,000 square feet of proposed development, plus the two parking structures. But under this ordinance, and we've gotten away from it, understand that they could build far more square footage, because what will constrain them is the traffic neutrality of the traffic of 475 square feet of office traffic might translate to 535,000 of mixed-use traffic. So there's... And I think that that's where... Why Regina keeps pushing back and saying, "There will be more traffic. It's going to be a bigger building. There will be more traffic."
Agreed.
That's what's going to happen.
No argument.
So we are creating value for the developers, because we're allowing them to have more uses that aren't allowed now. We're allowing them to have a higher building than they're allowed now. But in return, I think we're not actually getting traffic neutrality. You know, we're just having the peaks fixed. So I would like to see either some type of reduction on the peak, even if it can only be 5%, because overall, daily traffic will be higher.
Overall, background traffic certainly increases all the time.
All right. Can we just run the board and have everybody check in? I was going to start at the end, unless you have... So the way it is, or some form of reduction? The way it is now, which is just traffic neutrality, mixed-use traffic neutrality, they have to meet that, or do you want to impose an additional limit of some percentage reduction in traffic neutrality?
I think there should be some reduction.
Okay.
With some encouragement of the developer, if they have something else to get from making the reduction. If not, we're going to end up with the same problem.
Okay. John?
I'm certainly no traffic expert, but I've lived around here for an awful long time, and there's no doubt in my mind that when this building is built, traffic neutrality or otherwise, we're going to have a hell of a lot more traffic, if there's any room to squeeze it into the roads that are there. So at the very minimum, we have to ask for some sort of a reduction, and maybe we might actually get some traffic neutrality. You might actually get some smoothing out. But if there's not a target for them to hit, then, as Regina has pointed out, the incentive is to run the traffic up to the max. And once that's done, and those buildings are built, we have absolutely no recourse at all.